So preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda, our president can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
George Morris?
Yes.
And it looks like we're still waiting for Woody. Mary Stone?
Yes.
For town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Plan Director?
Yes.
And Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And anticipated speakers, Tom Zarico, Zenko LLC?
Present.
Thank you. So good evening, this August 2nd, 2023, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, generalized chapter 38, section 20, until March 31, 2025. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. And I'll note, just for the record, Woody Knight is with us now. Good evening, Woody.
Hello.
For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies that the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056, passcode 108790, or by calling 1-929-2056099US, New York, and entering the meeting ID number and passcode and prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and the attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable, Channel 9, on Zoom and at www.tncctv.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I'll go down the list of board members and inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using a mute button or your phone, uh, uh, star six to toggle mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. Uh, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. I know we don't have any public hearings tonight, but I'll continue on with, with the notice. Uh, after board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to, to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, uh, the participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again, afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So as I said earlier, we don't have any public hearings tonight. So the first item on the agenda on the new business is Tom Zarico from Zenko LLC, right, uh, Fieldstone Lane, formerly 15 Coleman Road. Tom, I guess you're going to give us an update on the project status, and I understand you're requesting a release from lot eight from the restrictive covenant. So that's set up, give you the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom Zarico, for High Street, North Andover. It's nice to see you all again. I assume you can hear me?
I could hear you fine.
Okay, all right. A quick update for any of you who may not have been by the project in the last week or two or so. Uh, we're rapidly approaching completion. We have, uh, two homes that are remaining to be occupied. One is 100% complete, the other will be 100% complete in the next two weeks, uh, which is, uh, the lot four, street number eight, the one that we're looking for the release of. I, um, uh, when I last saw you folks, uh, you, you honored my request to release a few of the lots. I expected that this final lot, uh, was, or, or this lot that's, um, I'm requesting to be released was, um, was going to be the last one, uh, um, to transfer, but it turns out that, uh, that it's not. It's actually gonna be, um, switched with, with, uh, the one remaining house out there. So, uh, but in any event, uh, the project is essentially, essentially complete. All of the heavy work, all of, there's no more heavy trucks to be, uh, to be brought in. In fact, uh, no, no more loam or plantings, those are all done, uh, and done extensively and far beyond what was, um, what was, uh, required in the subdivision as well as on the homes themselves. Um, the, uh, uh, we're expecting to do the finished paving, uh, in the next week. Um, that, of course, is subject to many things, as you all know, it's subject to, uh, to, to, to weather. It's subject to, uh, to equipment functioning properly for our paver, which is EJ paving. Um, and then, of course, the availability and the timely fashion of the material. But, uh, we expect that to be done next week. The, uh, uh, the only other thing, or the only other physical work, uh, item that remains out there is the monumentation. And there's, there's five bounds remaining to be set and seven steel pins, um, which the surveyor hasn't given me his day for next week, but he has assured me that he's coming out next week to do those along with the final as-built plan, which, um, which, um, really the only thing that's going to appear on that final as-built plan that isn't already on the interim plans that we supplied many months ago, are those, those, uh, monumentation points, um, and the actual, uh, uh, precise finished grade of the, of the finished paving, which is, uh, theoretically at least one and a half inches higher than what exists there today. Those are the only items that we haven't supplied already in previous as-bills. All of the homes have been, uh, certified their foundation locations with the building department and otherwise. Um, and, uh, everything else, I think, was, uh, was supplied with the earlier interim as-bills. So, um, I realize there's some, uh, there's some process here. That's why I'm hoping we can hopefully tonight, uh, come to a, a, a conclusion at least about how to deal with the, this release, which is for that last house. Um, and we have a, a timing issue for their occupancy and for their, as, as usual, for their bank mortgage and all of that. It's scheduled for a closing right now on, uh, August 23rd. Um, I was hoping we could sort of set the stage for, for getting this lot released at the next meeting, uh, at least so that we will have that in place, um, uh, for that closing. The, we really haven't made any significant changes in the course of the, in the, in the course of this development other than those things that we've discussed at length, like the transfer of the, of the, of the father stone, witch stone. Um, we've made minor, minor, uh, adjustments to the planting schedule because of availability of product, which is an issue for everybody in every business these days. Um, we, there may be some very minor grading revisions that are, um, on, on the lots themselves, not on, not on roadway or utilities or anything, just accommodating the idiosyncrasies of, of having, uh, six completely unique home designs out there. Um, and, uh, in one case over on the, um, on the border with Mark Woodbury's property, his long driveway that leads, uh, leads back to his home. Uh, we, we, uh, rather than putting in a split rail fence there, we put in a very heavy planting sequence of, of, uh, I don't know the exact number, but 20 or 30, uh, large evergreen trees as a, uh, not just a physical demarcation, but also a privacy screen for both the wood trees and for the residents here. Um, that, that change was a judgment I made that seemed to make sense. It's, um, it certainly wasn't a cost-based judgment. The split rail fence was about $2,200. Those plantings were about $8,000, so, uh, it was, it was made for, for other reasons. Uh, hopefully that's, uh, understandable. Um, the trailhead, uh, uh, we surfaced those with crushed stone rather than with wood chips. Um, much more resilient, much less, uh, uh, less maintenance, much, uh, much better and safer access. That was with the consent of Essex County Greenbelt and, uh, Samantha Holt has been out there and agreed that that was, that was a wise decision. And I think there's some correspondence, maybe, uh, Martha, that, that hopefully maybe you and Kristen have received after I met with, uh, with Chris LaPointe and Dave Remmer out there on site discussing specifically that, uh, as, as well as just giving them a tour of the property. So, uh, so that's the update on where we are, uh, where, uh, only making noise out there for maybe two more weeks. Um, and with the exception of, of the two homes that, that, that we still have, uh, at least in the short term, everything is stable and, and landscaped and completely, completely done. And I'm just trying to think, Martha, I got your, your message about, about the, um, uh, requirements to get final release. Um, I think it makes sense, um, if, if, and I hope that it makes sense that, that we can come to some agreement as to those items that remain, those work items that remain, which again, the finished paving, which I believe will be done next week, the monumentation, which I believe will be done next week, and then the final as-built and certifications, which, uh, may not be done until a week after or until about the time of the, um, of your next meeting. Um, and hopefully we can agree. I think the simplest thing is to agree on values for those items if we can. Uh, obviously subject to, to, to Joe Sawatka's review and staff's review of the reasonableness of those numbers. Uh, and I can post a bond if that's the, if that's the simplest thing to do for those, for those items. Um, in any event, I, um, I think that's, uh, that's the update. That's my perspective on things, and I'd love to have, have questions and dialogue on.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Uh, let me turn to Martha. Martha, maybe you can just remind us of what our regs call for in this stage in the proceedings?
Uh, sure. Yeah, would you like me to bring those up on the screen or just?
Sure, that'd be, that'd be helpful.
Okay. Are you able to see those?
Yes. Yep.
All right. Would you like me to make them any bigger or is that okay?
Uh, bigger, please. Speaking for myself, I can read them fine.
A little bit bigger, please. Thank you.
How's, is that better?
That's great, thank you.
Okay, welcome. So, uh, basically, in relation to release of the performance guarantee, uh, we will need to get a, um, a request from Tom, basically a statement saying that the project is complete and a request to release the, uh, restrictive covenant, which has been the form of performance guarantee. And as Tom said, all the lots have been released except for this remaining lot, lot four. Uh, when we're out on, on the site, he actually asked whether we might be able to switch that with another lot that has already been released. And we ran into this with the Wilshire Road project a number of years ago. And when we discussed that with town council, the answer was no. So unfortunately, I think, um, the only way to deal with this really is, is, as Tom suggested, to come to agreement on some dollar value of remaining work, um, and also in conformance with some provisions that I'll get to in a second. So the board can grant partial release, uh, which we, which the board has done for those other lots and can release the applicant from the covenant upon receipt of an agreement executed by the applicant and by the holder of a first mortgage on the premises, providing for retention of funds and their availability to the town. Um, and this is, this next one really is kind of the, I think, uh, one of the determining factors here. It says, "The board shall in all cases retain security in an amount equal to at least 20% of the total cost of improvements until the integrity of road pavement and drainage has been verified following a full winter in place, an amount equal to at least 5% of the total cost until trees and other vegetation have been established." Um, and the fee has been conveyed to the town, which we know is not going to happen, or three years have elapsed since completion of the improvements. Um, there's also provision below on the record drawings that they must be submitted and reviewed and approved by the planning board's agent, which in this case is Joe Sawatka, um, and by the board prior to release of the performance guarantee.
Martha, can I ask? Sorry.
And I was gonna, I was gonna say, um, with respect to the Wilshire Road subdivision that I mentioned earlier, in that case, we did agree upon an amount, dollar value for the items that were remaining. And in that case, he provided, um, funds which were held in escrow.
So Martha, then if I, if I understand your point, either a bond or funds would be acceptable, is that correct?
Yeah, so, um, the form is really up to, up to the developer. Unfortunately, it can no longer be the restrictive covenant if he's looking to release that lot. And we need to, we would need to get the new form of performance guarantee before those lots, that final lot was released, before the covenant was released, so that there still is some form of performance guarantee in place.
So we, we need to, uh, we need to, uh, find a way to come up with a, with a dollar amount for that then.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, Larry, could I? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm very sorry. Could I jump in on that or would you like to make another comment first?
No, I was just gonna ask you if you wanted to add anything before I turned to the board members.
Okay, yeah, a couple of things. Um, first of all, I do have a, a contract, uh, with EJ paving for the, for the paving. I know that exact amount. Um, I also know the precise amounts, uh, from the surveyor for the monumentation, the set five bombs and seven pins and the, uh, final as-built. Those are the three dollar items that, uh, that remain. I have those, you know, in contract form, and I'm happy to provide those. We can talk about them. Uh, the finished paving is just, is a little over $25,000. That was not the low bid, by the way. Uh, low bids were around 20, but this is a company that I've dealt with for many years. So, uh, that's the benefit to me and them. Um, the monumentation, um, is $1,810, and the final as-built is $2,800. It's a total of $30,147.50, and those are all, you know, contract amounts with the people who've been doing the work out here, uh, since, since we, since we started. Um, in terms of the, in terms of the trees and the plantings, uh, that's something that I, Martha, I sent to you and, and Kristen, and I, I know you observed in person, uh, a, a lot of the, um, a lot of the plantings. I sent a summary of what we've done out there. Um, the first comment is, "I've never lost a tree, a street tree in my life, and we've done quite a few of these things." So, something I'm very proud of, but I understand the need, uh, on, on plantings, uh, that were, are required as part of the project, uh, to, you know, to make sure that, that they're gonna be healthy. Uh, 177 plantings were required of this plan. We planted 224. Um, 78 of them have already gone through a full year of, of healthy growth. Um, and, um, you know, so we, we have, at, at this point, with what, with what has gone through a year and the additional plantings that we have, we have about 225% of what's required of the remaining plantings. We've, you know, I'm not, not looking for a pat on the back, although I always, you know, I always accept compliment if one's available, but, you know, we always do more than, than we're asked to do. And some of this was because I wanted to do it, some of it is because in discussion with, with residents and discussion with, with neighbors, this, this is what I decided to do here in this project. So I think I've, I, I think and I hope that the board would look at the planting scenario and look at what I've presented to Martha and Kristen and, and what, uh, uh, what Samantha has seen out there in, in her visit as well, that, that I've done enough there, I, I would hope. But, uh, and, and relative to the, um, you know, the pavement and drainage and, and utilities, everything has been in there, uh, for more than a year. Through the winter, everything has functioned. The only, the only change is an inch and a half of asphalt on top of what's there. There hasn't been so much as a, a trench settlement. Anyone who's been out there knows that. The pavement is, is smooth and regular, and there's, there's been no disturbance to it. Uh, it's in, in solid and excellent condition and is, is only going to be, you know, smoother and, and, and more perfect, uh, when we do the finished paving. So those, I, I mean, from my perspective, I, I'd like, I would like the board to hopefully accept those numbers as, as bond numbers because they are real. Um, uh, and, and if I complete the paving, for instance, which is the big item prior to the next meeting, then I would like to not want that one or, or because I don't want to pay for it twice if I don't have to. Um, the other items are somewhat incidental, the, the monumentation, which I think will also be done before the next meeting. Um, but if it is not, at least there's a number there, uh, for that. And then the paperwork of the final as-built. And again, the final as-built, the only, the only items are the monuments and the finished paving level. Everything else, uh, has already been provided, um, to, to one or another of the departments of the town. So anyway, that was long-winded, but hopefully that gives a little bit of perspective, um, on some of these items.
So Tom, I'm sorry, what was your, what was the final total that you gave? It was 30,000?
Uh, $30,147.50. The paving is $25,537.50. The monumentation, for reference, and these are numbers that, you know, could be, you know, cross-reference to other professionals. Uh, the monumentation includes five, uh, granite bounds at $250 apiece, that's $1,250. Seven steel pins, marking lot corners at $80 apiece, and that's $560. That, that's $1,810 for monumentation. And then the final as-built plan is not going to exceed $2,800. That's, you know, that, that, that's actually the number that was, that would, that I was billed for all of the previous, uh, um, information on that, on the interim as-built. And the work remaining here is certainly much less than that. But that's the number of not to exceed.
Um, actually, before I do turn to the board members, Martha, was there some issue of a field change, something? That?
Um, so the other change that we discussed out on the site was, uh, not only changing the, the entrance to the open space from wood chips to gravel, but also changing the access to the, um, the drainage easement, which is behind lot three. I actually have a plan which shows what the original was if the board would like to, to see it. I did send that around, but, um, I don't, I don't have the final. So Tom, I don't know if you want to address that or if it would be?
Yeah, let me elaborate on that, you know, it's, it's prob, probably, you know, I did discuss that with, um, with Dave and, and Chris when they were out there. And, you know, what I had wanted to do was, was preclude maintenance vehicles from driving over a finished lawn, even though there is an easement there to get to the, um, uh, uh, to the drainage system. The fact of the matter is, I pulled, I pulled the, the boulder out of the way there, uh, after our meeting, um, so that the access is clear there. And if you need me to do some corrings to show that there is gravel under the grass, that was always intended as a, as a grassed area with a gravel base. Um, that, you know, that's a, that's a wearing surface for vehicles. It could be used. Um, I would hope that it wouldn't be, but, um, you know, the maintenance vehicles can go either way. I just, I wanted, I, out of courtesy to that home buyer, I wanted to preclude it, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into that lengthy, uh, protracted discussion about something like that. Um, so anyway, that's, that's the net result. So that way is clear at this point, Martha. Uh, you know, the boulder is out of the way, and there's no plantings in that area.
Okay, and you said there is gravel underneath the grass there?
Yeah, there is, yeah.
And if needed, would you somehow demarcate that so that, that a truck knew that it needed to go down that way?
If you make me, I will. I, I, you know, again, in talking with, with Dave and Chris, they have absolutely no issue uh, with, with maintenance vehicles going on the pedestrian path, which is wide enough and, and, and is not a landscaped element. Um, so, I mean, I, it's there, it's, it exists. I don't want to encourage it because I don't think it's the right thing to do. We took, you know, special care to try to give what is really and truly a better access. Anybody who would come out there would look at the gravel access, uh, it's much more gradual. It's a much easier, it's a much easier access to that maintenance. And the turnaround or parking spot for any maintenance vehicle is identical. It's in the same place. Uh, so, so where, where a truck would get to is identical. I mean, it's no difference, uh, and you can see that on the plan.
And that shows up on the as-built? The way it's been done?
Well, it, it hasn't, it doesn't show up on, on, on the as-built yet, but it will show up on the as-built.
Well, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, that, the, the, um, that path, uh, uh, you know, I, I presume we don't have to, uh, survey 224 plants, uh, um, and, and, and mark them on a plan. That would make the plan awfully messy. I hope that, that, you know, between the multiple staff members, board members and, and residents can come out and you know, count if you'd like, but I, I don't want to survey those onto a plan. I think it's unnecessary, but the path, the specific location of the path, we'll survey.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, let me turn to the board members, and Pete, do you have any questions?
Uh, Tom, first, uh, thanks for the presentation, and it was good to see you out there today. Uh, the place is looking, uh, nice. Hey Martha, if I did this correct in my, my mind, not of, uh, 30,000 basically, uh, for cost, rough costs. So 20%, that's about $6,000, is that right?
You're saying 20% of that?
Of the 30,000.
Right, so I think that, are you referring to the provision in the, um, the subdivision rules and regs?
Correct, yes, yes.
Yeah, that 20% is actually the total project cost.
Okay, then it wasn't the outstanding. I just wanted to, to clarify that. Cool, uh, as far as the trees go, um, looks like I'll, I just want to pull that one up here. Got the wrong one up here, I think I like this one. Um, it looks like a total of 224 trees, uh, vegetation with the required of 177 and 78 have made it through winter, so that's like 44%. So do we need to go three winters, Martha? Is that how that, that number four reads?
Um, I think it's one, it's one winter.
Okay.
You know, the vi, their viability for a year.
Okay, all right. So we have?
Basically, just until, uh, until it's been established. But I think usually a year, sometimes there's a two-year guarantee on these plantings. And Tom, I don't know if you've gotten a guarantee from your landscape guy on these.
Well, um, I'm Well, um, I'm the landscape guy, um, we buy all of our nursery stock at Spring Hill Garden Centers and I have never asked them to replace a plant ever in my life and I never would do anything like that. If one dies, we'll replace it, but. You know. We we have ninety, ninety nine plants. Uh, that haven't gone through a full year. Um. Uh, ninety nine required, I should say, we have a hundred and forty six, we have to have a thirty percent mortality rate. On plants and I've never lost one, so I I mean. Again, I I understand where what's coming from, and if you, if you make me put something in escrow for. For that, then 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 so be it, but I. I thought we did a nice thing, I thought we did the right thing. I mean, a lumberjack would have to go out there and cut, cut the plants down for us to not comply, I think, but that's just my opinion and I don't want to sound sarcastic about it, but. We've really overdone it, I thought there.
And and the wonderful news is we've had a lot of good rain, which has really helped. Whole process, right, which is really good, so um, I don't have anything else than that, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Pete, George, do you have anything?
Yeah, yes Larry, I was going to ask you about the trees also, Tom, and it's been well answered, thank you very much. Uh, I just want to comment that I went up to see that the development. Looks terrific, I didn't realize what a great sightline you have coming out of the development. The Coleman Road is really dangerous. And this sightline be quite a ways, congratulations.
Yeah, no, thanks, I I, you know, that's something that um we always think about. Before we even conceive of a development and being on the the outside of the curve. And and where it is and 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 everything, it uh. It it was, you know, the other side of the road is 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 challenging, but where we are is is really a very safe place.
Yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh, Woody?
Thanks for your presentation. And um. I've been by there a few times, things are coming, uh have come quite some ways since the beginning. And uh, other than that, I I don't have any other comments and I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Woody, and Mary?
Um, we're gonna hold you to that, you never killed anything. Planting. I'm gonna come on account and then. You know, if there's trouble, I'll, I'll, you know.
You have to. Fine. Um, I I grew up surrounded by farmers and and they taught me, uh, they taught me how to keep things growing, I will say.
Well, good, that helps us out. Um. Do you have, you said you had a list? Of all the plantings, what kind of vegetation, what kind of trees?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that uh, that I uh. Uh, I emailed, I think, I think to both Martha and Kristen, I think too.
Right, that's what I thought you said.
And also to um, also to um. Uh, to Samantha Holt, she was out uh yes yesterday or the day before. I wanted to make sure she had an opportunity, you know, before this meeting to. See where we were at, make sure there was no questions or issues. And um, she seemed, hopefully she reported back or if she hasn't, she will, she seemed very pleased, she actually asked me to submit. The certificate of compliance on uh um on lot number three, which I just did today. Um, and they should be um, uh, you know, issuing that certificate next, next meeting, which is coming up shortly, so. Um, so she's seen this list as well and. When we made changes for species or or uh uh of trees or shrubs. We did that in consultation either with with Samantha or with Chris Hunter, who was our landscape architect. Uh, because, you know, nursery stock is very variable. Um, you know, we buy what what looks healthy and we want to buy, you know, um. Uh, you know, as as close, as close to the to the planting scheme that was possible, but. But nothing was done in a vacuum, it was always done with 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 some input either from Samantha or Chris Huntress or. You know, to make sure that we were on 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 path.
So I'm see, I'm looking at the list, um, it looks impressive. Uh, I mean, it 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 really, it's, it's great to see all that, but um, my question, and everybody was talking about the planting, so. Uh, I guess there's something, some interest. The stone monument. Can you go back over that, Tom, what is that?
Well, the 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 stone, you mean the the stone monuments that I mentioned, the five of them?
Right.
Yeah, those are, those are the stone bounds, uh granite bounds, a a four bu- a four foot by, I'm sorry, four inch by four inch square. Um, granite um um bound, four feet deep or three or four feet deep, whatever the standard is. Has to be set at every. At every angle point on the edge of the right of way. Uh, for permanent marking, has to be set in the ground, so it sets four feet or three feet or four feet into the ground. And just above the surface of the landscape so that it can be referenced. Uh, by surveyors and 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 anybody in the future. Um. Yeah, those are never done, or not, they're not practically done until everything else is done, because. If if we put those in early, they would be, they would be banged around and lost and 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 destroyed by 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 equipment and and otherwise, so we put them in. Once we know exactly the the finished landscape. Uh, and that's where we're at now, that's why we scheduled those for next week as well. Um, and the, and the, and the uh, and the pins are are, I think they're three quarter inch or half inch or three quarter inch or one inch steel rods. That get um permanently placed at each uh lot, front, front lot corner. Again, as permanent markings for future reference for. The town or or surveyors or banks or whoever needs to 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 have that that information. Um, you know, to locate everything in the future. Does that clarify?
Indeed, it does, and. You sound like you're really into it, Tom, so that's great, and I appreciate your presentation, thank you.
No, thank you, you're welcome, we've actually, you know, we've actually done quite a bit of this, we we actually had to. Had to uh um plant some much, much larger granite bounds when we changed the town line between North Andover and Bloxford years ago. Uh, and so we had to reestablish with, I think, eight by eight uh inch, uh, very heavy, huge granite monuments uh on a, on a. Far reaches of that, of that project to to permanently mark the change in the town line, but anyway, we're we're used to doing this.
Okay, that's terrific, excellent.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, um, well, I I think we're. I I think we're of an understanding that that you can certainly uh substitute. Either a bond or some cash. And an amount to be determined, I guess. Um. Uh, you know, and get your release on this lot. Um, my suggestion would be, Tom, that that you talk with Martha and maybe Joe Sawetka. And see if you can all come up with a with a dollar figure and some understanding on how long these these funds have to be held, I'm not quite sure, it's clear in my mind at this point. And then uh get you back on the sixteenth and see if we can get you a lot released at that time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that that would be great, that's what, that why I was hoping we could accomplish, I was. Uh, you know, I I um. Uh. I'll provide documentation on um on these, on these items, it. It could be by the time we sit down, Martha, next week, uh, hopefully the early in the week, maybe with Joe or at least talk on the phone. Um, it could be that some of these things are already done and it becomes, it becomes smooth, uh, if we. If we're already paid, we're actually uh um. Uh, you know, just waiting for final, for, you know, for the final calendar on all these items at this point, so. Um. But I think, you know. Um, I don't think there's too much mystery in these items, engineers and surveyors know what the monumentation. Uh, the cost to put in, as well as the final as built. Um. Joe should be familiar with that and the paving is is just a contract and it's, it's, it's based on tonnage and. And you know, it's relatively straightforward. Um, you know, I'm either writing a check to to my paver um in two weeks or I'm writing a check to the town, either way, so. Um.
But I'm not sure. What I'm not sure about is that one year uh winter requirement um for the paving, and I'm not sure if that just applies to the binder coat or to the final coat as well. That's something that maybe it can work out. Joe, Martha, I'm thinking Joe might have some thoughts on that.
Right, right, I know typically. Need to make sure that the binder goes through a winter, but I'm not actually sure myself whether the top coat. And needs to do the same, so.
The um, if I can just elaborate a little bit on that, I mean, I I understand the concern on that, however, it is a private road and. The 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 biggest reason for going through the winter is because of the freeze thaw cycle and the impact it has on the trenches and whether or not they were properly compacted. And you see it all the time on 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 developments, uh. Um, even, you know, I I I can admit that. There have been times when we've had a a settlement of a trench or or a service line um over the, over the many years of doing this, but. But this, this installation is. Is is very clean already, it's gone through the winter, I mean, there is no. There is no settlement, I mean, I I'd love to have everybody look at. Look at the binder, even even, you know, in the next few days or over the weekend, just so you can see the. Uh, the relatively pristine, other than, other than dirty condition that it's in.
Okay.
But I think we can work that out one way or another, I I mean, I. You know, I'm a business person, I want to. I I need, I need my resources when I post a cash, you know, you know, a a cash security. You know, I'm hoping that it's not going to be too long because I really do need that either from my family or for. The next thing that I'm working on, so I'd appreciate, you know, the full. Uh, support to come to a, you know, reasonable, you know, reasonable timing on that too.
Okay, so Martha, are you comfortable with this approach?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Alright, I'm I'm very confident you can all come to a reasonable agreement, so.
Um, yeah.
That said, anything else, many of the members, before we let Tom go? I don't think we need a motion to continue this.
Um, no, it's not a hearing, I do have one question for Tom, if I may.
Sure.
Um. Referring to the uh, the email from Chris LaPointe about um, you know, the two things, the access to the open space and also the the, speaking of stones, the stone.
Yes.
That I need to put signage on, and what what was, what's your response to that?
Okay, um. Yeah, the the, I think I mentioned uh to you, Martha and Kristen, uh, when we were out in in the field, that um. I I had ordered a stone um public access, you know, al- almost like a headstone, um, pursuant to uh Chris Hunter's is. Um, calling that out on the landscape plan. To mark the the access way to uh, you know, the path to the open space. Um, I actually uh left a deposit and and purchased that from 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 Hatwood in Haverhill. And he said to me that uh. Right now, all of the granite is coming from Vermont. But the quarry is underwater and that one of the two plants is not processing anymore, he doesn't have any idea how long it would take to get that monument. So, I mean, it's not a big, it's, I mean, it's a big, big, it's a big piece of stone, but. Um, I mentioned that uh, you know, to to staff and I mentioned that to Chris and um. Uh, and uh, and Dave, when we were out there, and I said, look. You know, I don't know when I can do that, it's not really up to me, I can't control that that stone. I said, I'm happy to to uh to contribute or 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 make whatever signage, you know, they want. Um, uh, because they're going to put their own signage in there anyway, which. Um. Not having the stone there gives them more flexibility as to where and how they, how they set that stuff, so I offered to. Uh, you know, to donate to that, to to their signage, their preferred signage. Uh, to alleviate them of that expense. As an alternative. Um. And they liked the idea, so. Um, I'd like to be able to do that and just, you know, help them do their job as well.
Right, so, so green, yes. I mean, if it's good with green belt, then that seems reasonable.
Yeah, it's, and it's on their, it's on their parcel, by the way, it's not on, it's not on the public way or on one of our lots, it's it's there. It is their land already, um, so. Um, you know, um. You know, I I kind of left there, left, left, left it as an option for them since they, they do control the destiny of that property to some degree.
Okay, I guess um, I'll, once again, I'll ask any of the board members anything further, or we can uh. Let Tom go. Not hearing anything, alright, Tom, hopefully we'll see you on the sixteenth and. Should be short and sweet.
Alright, thank you all very much, it's nice to see you again, and.
Nice to see you, Tom, thank you.
Back to you soon, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda, under old business are potential zoning amendments, Martha, do you want to take that?
Uh, sure. Um. I suggested that this go on the agenda primarily just to kind of get things back on on everybody's radar. Uh. We always end up, it seems, in a crunch before town meeting comes, and it's not too soon now to start thinking about these things. Um, as far as the inclusionary zoning is concerned, uh, we actually had a very interesting meeting with Habitat, a couple of people from Habitat for Humanity Today, which. Um, Kristen will fill the board in on later, um, under the planner's report. But uh, inclusionary zoning is one of the things that we talked about. And um. I thought maybe I would pull up the. Kind of the summary sheet that that Emily Noble had prepared previously on this. Um. If I can find it. Um. And, oh, hold on just a second, I thought I had it and I don't seem to, so please bear with me while I pull that up. But. This was a summary that she had put together, uh, looking at the inclusionary zoning in several other communities. So, is that big enough and are you able to see it?
Uh, it's good for me.
Yes.
Yeah, bring it up a little bit, please, Martha.
It's pretty small.
Not sure. It's not cooperating at the moment. I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get it any bigger right now.
It's okay, it's okay.
It's fine.
Yeah, it's very.
Okay, so, um, in this case, uh, Emily had looked at the inclusionary zoning from West Newbury, Maynard, Littleton, Chelmsford, Newburyport and Newton. And some of the factors were what actually triggers the inclusionary zoning by law. Uh, West Newbury was um three, I think that was the smallest, Newton is actually seven or more development size. Uh, the affordable requirement was range from ten percent. Which actually is consistent with um the allowed affordability in the MBTA community's zoning. And just to backtrack a little bit. Uh, one of the reasons to be looking at this now is uh. Town council has suggested that we adopt inclusionary zoning kind of hand in hand with the MBTA communities. So that as we, you know, potentially get multifamily development, we have. A mechanism for affordable housing built into it. Uh, we're allowed ten percent, um, we could go up to twenty percent, but if that's done, we need to have an economic feasibility. Study done, so that the ten percent seems like the the easier route to take. But in in this case, West Newbury um was ten percent, the high in this case was was Chel- Chelmsford. And uh, there was a note on Newton, I think that depends on the scale. And then there are factors in terms of, you know, uh, what what constitutes, if it's a fraction of a of a unit, um. Is it rounded up or is it not counted? Um. All of them allow or the uh inclusionary zoning on site, uh, some of them allow. Inclusionary zoning offsite, um, either. You know, with approval or by special permit. One of the other questions that we've discussed is whether. Uh. We would accept payments in lieu of. An inclusionary. An actual unit. And one of the issues that we have right now is we don't have any mechanism to accept those funds, we don't have any affordable housing trust, for example. Uh, West Newbury went through that process a while back and one of the things I would still like to do is to. Uh, get one of their select board members, Wendy Reed, and also potentially their former planner, Leah Zambardati, to talk to us. About the process that what they went through. For the zoning and the Affordable Housing Trust. And uh, again, we'll get into that a little bit with a discussion of Habitat for Humanity because that's. Been another option. Um. And one of the things they also talked about was finding that sweet spot. Um, and one of the things they also talked about was finding that sweet spot, um, of the payment in lieu. Uh, to make sure that it is, you know, set at a point where it's actually perhaps preferable. For the developer to provide the unit than, uh, make the payment. Uh, in some cases, there's a density bonus and other, you know, other considerations like tiers of units and that kind of thing. So I think, um, I think the next step would be to. Really start looking at, uh, what we would want to, what provisions we would want to have in our bylaw. Um, you know, what the trigger would be, have discussions about the payment in lieu, how we treat fractional units and that kind of thing. Um, and if anybody would be interested in, in working on this with us, that would be great. Otherwise, we'll make some recommendations and. And bring them back to the board. Any thoughts or comments right now or?
Could you send us that in an email that what you just showed us?
Yep, absolutely.
I have, I have it somewhere, but it's so far back, I would be able to.
Yeah, no, it was quite a while ago that we looked at it. So, um, happy to send that and, um. If you would also like copies of the related bylaws, we can send those as well.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry.
Well, no, go ahead, Larry.
I, I, I'm just thinking out loud a little bit. If you take the West Newbury example of, uh, the, the trigger is three units. And obviously, if you're looking at 10%, you're talking about a fractional fraction. So we would need to be thinking, let, again, just hypothetically. We would need to be thinking about whether or not that means they would have to round that up to one unit or make a payment in lieu. Cause I don't know how else you would do it.
Right. So, and, and I'm sorry, I stopped sharing it. Um, so if it's, uh, point eight or above, uh, it's a, it's a whole unit. If it's point one to point seven, it's a whole unit or payment in lieu. Um, and if it's, yeah, if it's, if it's below point five, it's a whole unit or payment in lieu. But yes, that's. That's definitely a discussion we need to have.
So if, if we were, I, I guess where I'm going with this is if, if we were to go with that low. Threshold number of three, then we would have to have a mechanism in place for a payment in lieu as a practical matter. Or maybe with a, with a larger number, that's not the case. You could, uh, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
Right, right.
With, with, I'll have in the mechanism for payment, we probably have to set the numbers a little different, like. Four, I don't know, it, this might stream to all of us, but four at 25%. So then that way, one unit would be. Credit, cause we don't, we don't accept a payment load.
Right. And, and the absence of an affordable housing trust or a house, you know, a housing authority, I think you're right. Would he? Think it would have to look like something like that. And I'm not taking a position on one way or the other. I'm just trying to think.
No, it has, it, it would be nice if it was straightforward because we're not doing payment load. As to what people could do in, in the future. But I, that's second I loved it.
All right. And I know, you know, Kristen has had experience with this and, and, and Ipswich and, um. You know, I think town council may also be able to provide us some, some guidance.
Good, right.
I'd be happy to throw some energy at this.
Good, wonderful.
Super. So the next thing, um, that was on, that I put on the list was to, um. Revisit the, uh, expansion of the, um, wireless communications tower district. This has been on our list. We talked about it as a priority and, uh, since that time, we actually. Verizon recently contacted Tracy to see about the possibility of locating a tower on High Road at the DBW Barn. Uh, 197 Hive, which is one of the locations that our consultant, David Maxon. Had identified as being a prime location to, uh, take care of the coverage gap. That's along High Road and this, that sort of black duck circle area. Um, it's not a parcel that's in our district right now. It's, it could still potentially be problematic. Just because of its size, it's not a very large parcel and we, we have fall zone requirements and things like that, but it's certainly one to. To look at to solve a coverage problem. And we had also talked about potentially, um. Triton or in the area of Triton and it's a discussion I haven't had with the superintendent yet, but would like to, to see, you know, what, uh. How open they would be to potentially citing one down there. And they do have not only the campus, but they have a parcel on the other side of Elm Street that. Um, you know, it could be potential as well. And that would be, you know, I think, subject to. Um, sort of support by the school committee, but, uh, talk with Brian first.
Um, maybe it, maybe the place to start, um. With this would just be to identify those areas that David Maxon suggested and. You know, at least get the discussion going on, on, on those.
Right, absolutely. I think those were the two key ones that I remember. Um, and unfortunately, I didn't go back and review his recommendations. Before this meeting to see if there were others.
But we got a little time, Martha, but, uh, you know, just to remind everyone, the way this process would start is, is we would. Submit a request or a recommendation to the select board who would then send it back to us for a public hearing. So. It's probably something that we want to at least start in the fall, wouldn't you say?
I would say, um, we always end up kind of in a crunch, um, but assuming that, uh, town meeting will be the fourth Tuesday. In April, they will be signing the warrant probably at least a month before that. We would really want to be aiming to refer, uh, refer the proposed bylaw amendment to the select board in January. For a public hearing in, in February. No, we don't have to wait, although we can't, um, there are some, some maximum time constraints as well. Um. I think you can't hold the public hearing more than six months before the associated town meeting. So we just have to fall within the parameters. But, uh, what I can do is put together, um, which I've done in the past, put together a schedule. Working backwards from the assumed town meeting date as to, you know, when, when we. When it would make sense to refer it to the select board, public hearing dates and all that kind of stuff. So.
Back to, uh, locations, the only other thing I can remember from back then was the Palm Island, but Palm Island would be. On poles, a lot of roadway, so in the right of way, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That was another safety area where they weren't getting service. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, there's not really, um, any good parcel down there for a pole location. There was an application to put a. You know, an antenna on a pole, uh, utility, existing utility pole at the center, and that did not move forward. And I did speak with the, uh, the Verizon representative, uh, who felt that a pole and, at least in the high road, road location as opposed to antennae. On utility poles was a better way to go, but, you know, the, uh, technology is changing all the time. And I did let her know that this was something that the board was considering, but it would be, you know, next spring at the earliest before it would actually. Go to town meeting for potential adoption, so.
Yeah, we, we still have to act, have to act on those, the small cell regulations too, which we.
Right, right, right.
And like you said, the technology is always changing. You never know, a year from now, two years, you know, that might be perfectly adequate solution, you know?
Yeah, it, it might be, so, um. So I think, you know, we need to pursue both. Um, we definitely need to get the small cell regulations done. And that's not a bylaw, so it doesn't have to go to town meeting, but, uh, this would be appropriate for both select board for small cell. Um, facilities in the right of way and also for ones on private property, so. Anything else on that?
It's important. It's important.
It is, Mary, absolutely.
I don't know how to move it forward. I, I.
Well, I think we start one step at a time and maybe like, like I said, that it just, it doesn't have to be perfect to begin with. I mean, but there is a process. Where we can refine it just to get something moving on it, come up with some sort of a draft. You know, it may be just simple enough to redefine the, the overlay district, identifying those parcels that David Maxon identified. Doesn't mean they're gonna be, you know, doesn't mean it's gonna pass town meeting, but at least it gets the, the discussion moving forward.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I think we would just, I think that's exactly right. We would add those parcels to the description of the, of the wireless tower district. And then we just need to kind of parse it through and see if there are any other related changes that need to be made. So that one should actually be relatively straightforward, um.
Yeah, I, I, I think the drafting of it should be straightforward. Again, whether or not how town meeting is going to receive it is, is another, other question. But.
Sorry, the expansion of the district is this for the benefit of filling places where there's not coverage now. Is that? Accurate?
Yeah.
So presumably the residents would welcome it.
Not necessarily.
I think you have a problem.
Not necessarily, but hopefully it, it is, it is a safety issue if there's something happens in any of those areas. The lack of landlines now because of this technology moving forward, everyone's got a pole in their bucket, but it doesn't help if it doesn't work.
Right.
Right. And as David explained, that part of High Road is in the shadow of Old Town Hill. So the ones that are on Route One really don't. You know, the signal just doesn't get over there. And I think, you know, I think the, the, um. Uh, the wireless companies, there are provisions if there's really a demonstrated lack of coverage, they, they can still. Request a use variance for a lot that's not within the district, but they really would prefer not to, not to have to request a use variance. And if we can find ways to get the coverage that we need, then that makes sense to do that. The last one on the list, um, for tonight at least is, is lot dimensions and, um. That's one we've talked about before. We tried unsuccessfully to deal with it previously, but, uh. Kristen did get some information from, uh, Annie Schindler, who is the planner in Groveland, um, um. Uh, on research that she had done, um. I, I think she put a query out on the mass planners listserv and got feedback from a number of, of communities. And I'm not going to go through it tonight, but I thought I would share it on the screen, uh, just for a second to kind of give you all an idea. Um, of different approaches. Uh, some of them are strictly dimensional, saying you've got to keep the frontage. Back from the, uh, the, the width of the frontage, a certain distance back from the street and then have an area. And link in its 250 feet to the sidelines going through multiple points in the building. Uh, there's one that I had never heard of, which actually comes up with a factor. Uh, they call it a regularity factor, which has to do with the perimeter and the, uh, lot area. And it would be interesting to kind of parse that one through to actually see how that works out. Um, there are some which are, I'd seen before that are interesting to me. They actually. Omit areas that don't meet certain regulations, certain dimensional. Uh, requirements from the, um, the, uh, total area for the lot. So for example, in this one, the, the dark hatched areas don't count towards the actual zoning required size. For this lot area. So, and that one, that one seems to show up in a number of different communities. So that one also would be interesting to kind of look at against some of the. Lots that we've had that have been particularly problematic in the past, particularly in yield plans that have been presented to the board. So a number of different, different kinds of formulas and things like that, some that are more complicated and some that are less. But I think it would be worth, um, kind of taking a look at these in relation to our lots and, and seeing if any of them make sense. At this time to pursue. So what, what we could do is, is, uh, take a look at those and then come back with some recommendations to see if they. Seem like there's something that we should move forward with.
So. Anybody, I have any thoughts, bud? I mean, I, I think it's something we need to approach, uh, is. We, we did take a good look at it a couple of years ago and really didn't come up with, uh, uh, with a good solution, but, uh. I, my mind is open.
It is something we need to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, even if we establish a, a minimum lot size or minimum lot width of. You know, 50 feet or something, something like that. I mean, I think we really want to avoid the ones where it goes down to 10 feet or. You know, has a very narrow tail with bulbs at each end of it, things like that.
Right.
So.
Which only exacerbates in public safety access and all of that good stuff. You know?
Right. And, and also results in some lots that, um, they meet the zoning requirements in terms of lot area, but they're really not very functional. Or practicable.
Right.
So, and, you know. Uh, reasons for the shapes have been given such as, you know, providing the property owners their own path back to the marshland or something like that. But it's still, uh, in reality, it makes it very difficult, I think.
We've seen some crazy yield plates.
We have, we have. So, um, that's, that's really, um. All I wanted to go over, uh, tonight on, on those particular items. I don't know if there's anything else that anybody would like to put on. On the list for consideration for, for the spring town meeting. Cause we're also going to be dealing with the MBTA communities, which is a big, a big thing in and of.
On all of these things that, that's a pretty, that's a lot on.
Yeah. Yeah, that is, it is a lot to deal with. So, um, if that's, um, if there's nothing else on those, then just a quick, uh, update on the MBTA communities. Um, multifamily zoning, we have been working with, um. Uh, the staff at MVPC currently working with, uh, Ian, Ian Burns, who heads up their community and economic development program. And Kayla, who was one of the people who provided the presentation, uh, to the board a while back. Uh, we've been looking at, um, the districts where we might allow this. Um, and it's pretty much consistent with what we talked about previously, which is the Business and Light Industrial District. And the Commercial Highway District. We've also included the, we're, 12 Kent Way is the Commercial Highway A District. And there are a couple of other parcels which are close to those, which seem to make sense to include. Um, they're working with a, a tool that's been provided by what was DHCD, um. Called the compliance tool and taken all of our zoning requirements and for those districts and plugged them in and come up with. Uh, a number that could actually be, um. Generated using those zoning requirements of multifamily units and it way exceeds what our actual requirement is, which is 154 units. Uh, we're, and, and that compliance tool does take into account, excuse me, you know, development constraints such as wetlands. And, and A C E C and floodplain and all that kind of stuff. And even, even with that, the number is quite high, so. We're going through and seeing if we can sort of refine it down to certain parcels within those districts, which. we're going through and seeing if we can sort of refine it down to certain parcels within those districts, which really seem to make the most sense. And we're meeting with them tomorrow morning for kind of the next iteration on this and also talking about public outreach, which will go kind of hand in hand, I think, with the housing production plan outreach. I can't remember if I mentioned they had. They've engaged a consultant, consensus building institute, which helped us with our Plum Island project to help with the public engagement process. And they're beginning to kind of flush that out right now. The first one they're thinking about is a, as a regional session, which would potentially include, still to be determined, but maybe, you know, West Newbury and Rowley or, you know, other communities that are somewhat similar to us in the Merrimack Valley region. And, you know, also there'll be presentations to the, the select board and the planning board. So that's all in, in in process now, sort of working out the plan for that.
What, what's our timeline to the next step with the state, Martha?
So what we had committed to in our action plan, which has been approved is to actually take this before town meeting this April. Our compliance deadline isn't until December of 2025. But when we discussed it, I think everybody felt that we should, since, since it requires town meeting approval, and even though it's only a simple majority, it would be beneficial to bring it before town meeting in 2024, in case it doesn't pass and we have more, you know, more opportunities to.
All right, I recall that discussion. We don't, we don't have any further steps with the state between now and then. We just need to get this.
No, no. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's really it. And the one question that nobody has answered yet is what happens if despite all of your, you know, good faith efforts, it doesn't pass a town meeting by the time the deadline comes. But, you know, I think the public engagement is really going to help and, and just looking at this really is an opportunity to solve some major, major housing needs that we have, which have been identified both in the master plan and also in the housing production plan and the data that Lauren and Kayla provided to us. So that's, that's where we are with that. We'll just keep you posted and, and let you know when you know, when it seems good to kind of bring the first pass at the actual lots and district shape and all of that for districts.
Great. Thank you. We move on. Anybody else have anything on this? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda is reading of the July 2023 financial report, which I will do. The payroll warrants for the planning director and assistant planner PR 24 dash two for the pay period ending seven 1523 was approved as well as payroll PR 24 dash three for the pay period ending seven 2923 again for the planning director and assistant planner. And the following planning board invoices for wireless Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad approved seven 2523 and MBPC fiscal year 24 assessment, also seven 2523. So next we have liaison reports. Martha, anything from the select board?
Uh, yeah, they, their last meeting was on July 25th. Not too much really. That's of particular interest to the board. There was one extremely long discussion. It was a request for an entertainment, entertainment license for a wedding at the Sunset Club for live music to go from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And their regular entertainment license had just been renewed by the select board with a limit of 7:00 PM for live music. And Beau had mentioned that they would be coming before the board for a number of, you know, maybe 10 to 12 special, special requests. Unfortunately, he didn't mention this one when they were going through the renewal of the entertainment license. So it ended up being quite a discussion and the select board ultimately allowed it from I think six to six to nine, so an hour shorter than they had been requesting. But it kind of goes back to, you know, the overall discussions about the Sunset Club and things that they would like to do. They did also get a one day tent permit for, for this wedding from the building commissioner. Other than that, there were, you know, some one day liquor licenses, some entertainment licenses for Newbury Town Day, which will be on August 26th. And select board did adopt a public comment policy and apparently the finance committee has also done so. And the select board chair suggested that other boards and committees might want to do that as well. So that was something that I wanted to bring before the board to see if, if there would be any interest in developing a policy on public comment for, for the planning board. So if it would be helpful, I can get copies of the ones that the, the select board and the finance committee have adopted for their own use.
Yeah, that might be helpful. So this would just be an agenda item to open the, open the meeting to any public comment outside the, the requirements for comments, say on for public hearings and that type of thing.
Right, right. So it's kind of an expansion of, you know, the, the select board has been allowing public comment, but there's, it's kind of an expansion of, of how that would be dealt with. So. So, and the other thing of interest to the board is that the municipal building committee had suggested that the demolition delay process be started for the old, for the town hall at 25 High Road, not, not with the intention of demolishing it, but to get a dialogue going with the historical commission and have them make a recommendation as to whether it's preferably preserved or not. And that was tabled. So that's not, not moving forward at this point. And there was some very, very nice recognition of Chief Janveren, who will be retiring as of August 8th. Senator Tarr came and gave a commendation from the Senate. Kristin Casner also came as our representative with a commendation and the select board also made one. So that was all. That was very nice. And Ollie Ziegler is going to be the interim chief. And the search is on for permanent. And that's, that's it from the select board.
Thank you, Martha. For the ZB, I'm sorry. Someone have something? For the ZBA, they had their regular monthly meeting on July 20th. I unfortunately did not attend, but I did review the, the recording. And they had a public hearing on 134 Northern Boulevard, which is a petition to alter, renovate a pre-existing commercial restaurant and store into a single family dwelling with an increase in height. There was a lively discussion went on for well over an hour and the board didn't make any decision, but the hearing was further continued until their August 17th meeting. And I don't know what else might be on the agenda for August 17th at this point. So that's all I have. Conservation, Woody?
Conservation was last night. There was a few septics, a few decks, one rooftop and one not from island. Stairs down from island, a few enforcement orders. They had a pretty full agenda in a of, to another conversation on Green Street about a house that they want to raise and redo. The only thing that really applied to us, and it didn't really apply to us because we've already gone through it, but a a certificate of compliance for self-storage. There was a discussion on that, but other than that, that was about it.
Thanks, Woody. Martha, I think MBPC is still on their summer hiatus?
They are, yeah.
So I assume there's nothing.
No, no meeting update. The housing, I've already mentioned the housing production plan, which is moving forward and the hazard mitigation plan also is, is moving forward. Not quite sure what the next steps are with that. We've been, you know, identifying what they're calling sort of community lifelines and things like that. So a lot of activity going on, but no meetings until September.
Thank you. And that brings us to the planning directors' report. Martha and or Kristen?
Right. So Kristen, do you want to do the, the Habitat discussion?
Sure. So Martha and I met with Megan O'Neill, who's the director of the Habitat for Humanity that covers all of Essex County. She previously there was a North Shore chapter and a Merrimack Valley chapter, but probably I don't know, four or five years ago, maybe they merged to be Essex County. So the chapter covers 34 cities and towns. They work, as you all probably know, on building affordable housing units in communities. Building housing that is actually for, you know, known individuals who have applied for a lottery meeting, certain income criteria. Usually it's I think 60% of area median income is usually the threshold for most of their units. It, it can change depending on the community and the, and the project. But it was just kind of an update on what they're doing and they were, you know, so we were interested to hear about some of the work they're doing. And then they were asking us, you know, what's going on relative to affordable housing initiatives in Newbury? So it was, it was a great discussion. Besides Megan O'Neill, there was a resident who serves as a volunteer for Habitat. Just he's lives in West Newbury and sort of works in a smaller subset of towns doing outreach and being available in terms of looking for land acquisition sites to build units on. So that was great. We heard about they're doing seven townhouses in Salisbury. There's a duplex in Havrell, duplex in Lawrence. They're doing a project in Hamilton that actually has 10 units. I think most of their projects are, many of them are duplexes, single family. But a current project was interesting to hear about this 10 units in Hamilton. Martha was mentioning earlier, they were just sort of sharing a lot of the really creative and different strategies to get this work done. In when they're what they have an inclusionary housing by law, and there was a subdivision which required one unit, I think it was an eight unit development required one unit affordable. And instead of the developer actually building the affordable unit, they created the lot and conveyed the lot to Habitat who owned the lot and then Habitat actually built the house. So just kind of being in touch with what towns are doing and being available and, you know, really kind of proactively coming up with solutions and to actually build the unit. What else? I mean, we talked about some of the same things we've talked about, like challenges with building up. When developers often choose to do in lieu payments and build up a trust fund, and then the town doesn't necessarily have the capacity to actually, you know, be a developer and build the unit themselves. But there are other things that that money can be used for. And one of the things Habitat is doing more of is using funds to for critical home repairs for income eligible residents. So how do you help people stay in their home and make repairs? On sort of a short term loan or even a grant of funding. So inclusionary zoning is a way a town can build up, you know, an affordable housing fund and many of the towns in the North Shore also use the Community Preservation Act funding to allocate a portion of those funds every year into the housing, housing trust. So there are definitely a lot of really creative things going on. We sort of looked at town on parcels. We looked at, you know, opportunities there might be. And just sort of agreed to stay in touch and work together.
Good, but a lot of things there I wouldn't have thought of on my own.
And it was really, really, really interesting just to kind of follow up on what Kristen was just talking about this Hamilton project with 10 units. They actually, the land, I was wondering how they could possibly acquire land in in Hamilton, but that was actually purchased with assistance from their Affordable Housing Trust. So you know, that, that can be a great resource. But they, they, you know, they talked about doing friendly 40Bs and, and you know, helping to make sure that the, the houses are deed restricted. And they, they talked about a, a project in Lynn, which started as a simple kind of ramp repair for a veteran who had a, had a prosthesis and had mobility issues and it turned into a whole house renovation. You know, using these funds and that house will actually get passed to Habitat and be available for, you know, for a, a family that meets their income thresholds, you know, when he can no longer be there or passes away. So a lot of, a lot of good opportunities.
Yeah, it sounds like that'd be a great resource going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Great partner.
Is that it for the report or do you have?
No, I've got you other, other things. And actually one, I realized that some of you may not know this, but this is sad news that we learned at the beginning of last week that Mark DePiro passed away. So you know, that his projects are moving forward. I haven't been able to find any information about any kind of a service or anything, but if I, if I do learn about it, I will let you know.
We still have Steve Sawyer on the agenda for the 16th.
Yes, yeah. At least as far as we know, we do. Woody mentioned Newbury self-storage, the 131 Newbury Port Turnpike. We had a a site visit out there on Monday. So it's Kristen and I and Sam and Joe Sirwodka. And TJ Melvin from Millennium and Bill and Kevin from KNR Construction, who's actually doing the work out there. To, we have an ASBIL, so it was really to look at what's been completed, in particular the constructed wetlands, because there had been some concern about the plants that had been specified. It drained so well that they needed to find some different plants. So Joe has the ASBIL right now and is reviewing it. I think one question for the board will be KNR still has a number of very large piles of rocks on Bill's property at the, at the back of the property. So if Bill is looking to close it out, that may be a point of discussion. There are certain things that KNR will be required to do, like replanting the buffer between the tree buffer between the two properties. That's not on Bill. That's on, on KNR. But, and we did talk with Kevin about the schedule for 84 Boston Road and he's anticipating completion in November, but he said he would get us an updated schedule. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks Martha.
Thanks Martha.
Thank you, Kristen. So the last item on the agenda are, are meeting minutes from June 7, June 21, June 29 and July 19. Have we all had an opportunity to redo those?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to move forward? Okay. Well, let me, let me just go down the list. Maybe we can do this in one motion. Does any, anyone have any, any amendments to the June 7th meeting minutes? No, hearing none. Anyone have any amendments to the June 21st meeting minutes? No? And likewise for June 29th, any, any changes, amendments? No, not hearing any. And lastly, July 19th. No, not hearing any. And lastly, July nineteenth, we all good with that? I'm sorry. Well, that being the case, then it entertain a motion to approve the uh, meeting minutes from June seventh. June twenty-first, June twenty-ninth and July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So vote.
Thank you, George. Is there a second? Thank you, Mary. Is there any discussion? Uh, hearing on Pete, how do you vote on the motion? George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so those are approved and we can get those up on the website. And that concludes the agenda for tonight, so if anyone would care to move to adjourn, I would accept that motion.
Um.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Woody. Um, any discussion, hearing then, Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Fair thing.
Uh, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, and thanks, everybody.
I vote yes as well, so we're adjourned at eight thirty-one P M. Thanks, everyone.